Over to me?
No, not me.
Good afternoon to everyone here. Thank you for so much for coming to our trustee meeting on October 23rd. I call this 1202? 1204? I call this meeting to order 1204. Am I loud enough?
Yeah.
Okay. We would like to have a productive meeting where everyone is respected, valued, seen and heard. Please be reminded that comments will be positive with no inappropriate behavior. Comments will be only on the issues on the agenda and no personal attacks on anyone seated at this table. Disrupted patrons will be asked to leave. And you will have, you'll have three minutes on an action item to comment if you want, right? Yeah. All right. We are going to look at, where's my stupid? Changes or additions to the agenda? Are there any? No? Just a vote? No, no. Okay. Okay, is there a public comment on any items on the agenda? Okay, pretty quiet in here. All right, we'll move to the minutes. We're not going to read them, but we could take a couple of minutes if you want and consider the approval of the September minutes. Have a mind? Unless you guys look at them online.
We're not here.
Okay. Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion to approve our minutes for my September meeting. Do I have a second? Okay, now a public comment? Is there? Any public comment on the minutes? Or did I do that already? I'm sorry. Okay, okay, now we will vote on the approval of the September 25th minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Okay, motion is carried. All the, okay, we are moving to the financial reports for September. Yeah, I'll take a look. Yeah. They look fine for me.
I know it's a two.
That's what two. Okay. Little question?
No. One of the things was is 80% views.
Where's, where's that down?
100%.
What?
Publicity subscriptions and views. Under 80%.
Under 100%? No. Count three. 330. Yeah, that's on the page. Page two.
On the back.
What it's page name.
Oh, I see that. And I think yikes, that's a lot. Already.
Any thoughts, Emily?
Yes, so. So part of that is the Junior Library Guild subscription, so that's one of those bigger ones. And then because there's not. Geraldine does, we talked about, they just get the Acantha now, and well, the River Press can be Acantha. So their other subscriptions aren't. Like that should be, that number should change much from.
They will be. Thanks.
And like the postage is at 100% because we tried to, just before the post had changed. Stanser 75 cents. Yeah, so we tried to, we tried to get those, so that's why. And then it should be high. Anyway, but yeah, we just want to make sure we got that.
Yeah.
Any others? No? A public comment? Do that first. I have to do motion first, thank you. I would like to have a motion that we accept the monthly financial reports for September.
I know that we accept the financials for September.
Do I have a second? Okay. You second to the box, so you can say Janet, right? Okay, spoken. Be over. All in favor of accepting the monthly reports for September, say aye please.
Aye.
Oh, now, I'm sorry. Now a public comment. Any comments? All right. I have a motion and a second. Is there a vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. Moving on to branch reports.
Can somebody grab Darlene? She's backed up. Sorry, you're behind.
Here I am. I was asked to bring up flooring. And we had Brandon's come down to do a bid on all of the flooring. From here. There are rips and tears.
One for each of the.
Yep. And. So it would be tile flooring and. There's, there's bad rips by the office. There's rips in front of the, in the entrance and there's seven in the Montana room. And so as you're vacuuming, it's, it's ripping it up and making it into a tripping hazard. Yes, the carpet is only seven years old. But there is the bid. And.
Are you in favor of tile versus?
It's the tile carpet.
Okay, so like we put in at Geraldine, so that if something happens, you just.
Pick up tile square.
Replace the square.
The problem with all that is we would have to do it in stages because you would have to move all the bookshelves.
So are you in favor of replacement or not?
Yes. I mean, that's gonna have to be done.
Okay.
Sometime.
Okay.
We need to vote up?
Do you? Can I speak about that? So I was in on the whole, I was on the foundation or brought in by the foundation and on. And there was, they wanted tile to begin with, that was the whole idea. But at the time, the, the, it was cheaper to go with the full carpet, so that's why they did that. And we had even reported some of the, I wouldn't say, when they butt up together and they're that kind of carpet, they don't match and they do rip and tear. And so we had reported that even before the open house. But it's just got worse as, as the years went by. So.
Yeah, but it's like a half an inch missing in front of the desk. So. It's good.
Yeah. So there was. Janet brought up at the last meeting about the chain of communication between trustees and foundation and projects. So I would like to have this be used as an example. So moving forward. So Darlene has presented it to the Board of Trustees, but it will come out of foundation money. So we have, thankfully today, we have the foundation meeting to follow, so it can be taken care of right away. So these kinds of projects can come before the board. As we move forward, Rich and I were talking, I would like to give him an opportunity in just a moment if the board is okay with that. And I was explaining, you know, so they had the, the Big Sandy build and there was trustees and foundation members were working. Or the meetings were together is my understanding. And then when we were doing the Geraldine after I came on. As director and Geraldine was happening, we kind of held those meetings jointly. So we've been in the depths of construction and remodeling for a long time now, right? I mean, 10, 10, 12, 50, however long it's been. So it is going to maybe look a little different moving forward than what it has looked like in the immediate past. So. So to take a look at that, Rich, would you, do you have anything you would like to? Is that okay? I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Yes, yes, please, yes.
Thank you. First, I'm gonna take a. Take advantage of the point of privilege to just address the carpet tile thing because we just did carpet tiles at our church. And the advantage, one of the advantages is if there's a damaged square, you can just take that square out and put a new square in. Or if there's a stain on a square, you can take it out and wash it separately and then put it back in. So it really, in the long run, saves on repair and cleaning problems. Regarding the question that Janet raised last month about the process for the trustees and the foundation working together, I've given that considerable thought. One of the issues for me is that there's potentially considerable lag time between something the trustees want the foundation to consider and, and the trustees meet on a monthly basis and the foundation meets quarterly, so there's this lag time. And if we need to move on something more quickly, it might be problematic. And. And so. I'm a little bit, and I would like to get some clarification from the trustees about how we can work together. However. It dawned on me kind of late in the game thinking about this thing, that we have two trustees on the foundation board. And so we shouldn't have any problem with communication between the trustees and the foundation, considering Jesslyn and Kim are, are on there right now. And if there was something that we were bringing up and talking about and ready to make a decision about and the two trustees on our board felt that it should go before the trustees first, then they're obligated to speak up and let me know so that I put the brakes on and we make sure that that happens. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So that's the whole purpose. We have kind of a built-in safety mechanism so that the foundation just doesn't go out in some wild goosey direction that the trustees wouldn't be in favor. We have a systemic safety safeguard there with the two of you being on there. So I don't think it'll, it's a problem. The process, I think, is pretty safe. But is that addressed what you wanted me to address?
Okay.
So may I address that? Okay, number one, you voted on entering her into the foundation, which has to come out of the board. Number one, that's a board appointment. Okay? So it has to come before the board and be voted on. I don't have any objection with it, but it should have come to the board first. Okay, number two, I actually did, I was in the courthouse on Monday to put in my to vote and the commissioners motioned me in. So I have something I was actually gonna present. So I appreciate the foundation's efforts to secure grants and support the library. The commissioner stressed to me on Monday that the trustee board needs to be involved in all purchases, especially anything that goes into the library and other significant expenditures. These should align with the board's strategic vision and priorities and long-term goals. So it says, he said, all stakeholders should have a voice in the decision-making. And I, and when I stopped in there, Clay was there and Bob Pasha. So yes, indeed. And one of the things we've always had a problem with when I was on the foundation is the foundation lists all the things that are purchased and put it into their tax report. Well, actually, none of it belongs to the foundation. It belongs to the library. So all the time, I get tired of stress that the $1,500 that you pay to have your taxes prepared would not have to come out to anything if you're nonprofit. They send you a postcard and all you do is send it back. So that's always been, it's not, they don't belong to the foundation what you purchase for the libraries. And so that's where it goes into. And the board of trustees are over the library and everything that goes in the library. So.
I guess that's kind of a confusing idea to me, Janet, because I understood that when the foundation was heavily involved with the building of this library, there came a final point when it was transferred over.
That is true.
But for maybe possibly a year or more? Like the foundation held the assets until one transfer point.
Right.
Okay, so it's not necessarily black and white.
No, it is black and white. I mean, if you want to move a wall in this library, it's gonna come to the library. If you need to put something in that's a large piece of furniture, that it's anything, it comes to the board of directors. Because that's what the.
You mean the board of trustees?
I mean the board of trustees, yeah, yeah. And that's why. And what you're explaining is different than what I'm explaining. And I'm explaining to you that because they bought the carpet, now the foundation, it probably will go through the foundation, okay? But that shows then on their assets, the foundation doesn't have assets. And I've tried to explain that over a time period because they go back to the library. It's a foundation for the library of the library.
This sounds like a complicated because.
No, it really isn't. I looked it up and I found all this on it.
I think it's quite complicated because I think the foundation absolutely has assets, particularly cash assets, which we make a very.
That is true. That is true. But their grant donations, their grants and donations and they're nonprofit.
But I believe that's an asset.
Yep. So that is an asset, but they're not an asset as far as the materials. They have been listing the materials.
Like a different type.
Yeah, they've been listing the materials.
Rich?
You mentioned that the commissioners talked about the long-range plan, right? So that's why Emily and I are working to put the pieces of the long-range plan together along with Kim. And then that would be presented to the board of trustees. But we've started that process particularly regarding Fort Ben Library and some capital needs at the Fort Benton Library. We're going to meet with a contractor next week to just get some estimates about that. But no, let me just finish by saying that. Just check this out if I'm understanding this correctly. If a long-range plan regarding some very specific things at the Fort Benton Library is presented to the trustees and the trustees approve the long-range plan, then if the foundation moves ahead and says, let's spend money on roof roofing or something like that, does that then have to go back to the?
No, because all the laundry plans and all the strategic vision and all the decision-making, if you presented it and we've looked at it, we've okayed it, then that should be it.
All right, so that's what I want to.
It's just, it does come from the, actually, the board of trustees are the ones who make the strategic plans. But we're more than happy, we appreciate the foundation, more than happy to look them over, okay?
Awesome, thank you.
And Rich, I would just say that, you know, I think everyone can tell we're not the most cohesive board at the time. But I would also say that we would, we will do our best, Jesslyn and I too, as we move through the strategic plan to try to like bring the next step to the board.
Gotcha. Actually.
So known at this time, is this when we nominate the person?
So I, I took the opportunity to look up the foundation bylaws and it doesn't have anything about approval by the trustees. Number of directors there shall be. Well, I could just start, board of directors. Power, purpose, powers and duties. The property assets, business and affairs of the corporation shall be managed and controlled by the board of directors, which is board of directors, we're talking foundation, board of directors. The board of directors is vested with all the powers of the corporation itself. The board of directors shall have general authority to sell, lease, mortgage, exchange or otherwise to those of the whole, whatever. Section two, number of directors, there shall be six directors. The number of elected directors shall be five, of which not less than two nor more than three shall be members of the Shoto County Library Board of Trustees. In addition, there shall be one non-elected, non-voting director who shall be the executive director of the Shoto County Library. The number of directors may be altered by amendment to these bylaws, except that a director's term may not be shortened by a change in the size of the board. A member of the Shoto County Library Board of Trustees who has completed his or her maximum of two terms and who is also serving one of the two trustee positions on the foundation board may complete the remainder of his or her term on the foundation board. Election term of office, elected directors shall normally be elected by the board of directors at the first regular meeting of each calendar year.
Okay, so I do remember when you brought it forward to put in Danny into the board and you asked for approval. And we also voted when Kim went on that.
I remember there being discussion, but.
Because you were on the foundation at that time too, Janet.
I was on the foundation. So we, part of the discussion was the fact that since we were in the middle of the Geraldine remodel, instead of having to repeat at two meetings, we, and trying, instead of trying to find a replacement for Ron for both the board of trustees and the foundation, we took that opportunity to keep, to retain you on the foundation and to bring two more trustees over to help the three. And so. I think that was more of a foundation decision.
But it sounds like at this point we're all in agreement that Jesslyn.
Yes, definitely, definitely. So we'll just move on.
Madam Chair, may I just address this? I think maybe moving ahead so we don't have this discussion again, maybe we should for tableists for next time and have a vote on it that we do make it go through the board so that we just don't have that confusion again. So that the federation can, excuse me, the foundation can have their selection and then it just get presented to the board or opposite way where the board sees who they want next. And then the foundation can approve it, one, one way or the other, just so we don't have to have this discussion again.
Would you be willing to work with me because of, in, in just the brief sense this has come up? In speaking with people from the state that the foundation and the trustees are two totally separate things.
I agree with that.
Completely separate, so I think we need to really look, if you and I could sit down and look at these foundation bylaws.
I'd be happy to do that.
And, and take a look at that. And then it might be something that actually needs to go to the foundation because it's the foundation who is, has control of the foundation bylaws, so if that needs to be looked at, it would need to be at that foundation.
I'd be happy to have, just so we don't have to have this confusion again. I'd be happy though to do that with you.
Is that good for that?
It's the floor and an action item that we need to.
I believe so, yeah.
Action, we need to vote on it. Could I have a motion that the foundation works with Darlene to put, to get money for the carpet to replace carpet here? Could, is that right?
Yeah.
Or maybe just a motion to request new flooring through the foundation?
Yes, may I have a motion to request new flooring through the foundation? Is. Your.
I guess, I don't know much about the situation, so I'm not necessarily a good person to make a motion.
I make a motion that we move ahead with allowing Darlene and the foundation to put new carpet in this library.
So second.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion out to, for new carpet. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
On the back, it said the estimate may be withdrawn by as of November 6, 10.
He, see, we did that and then, then we decided not to do it.
The only thing that will change on that is the labor cost. So we, we had this brought up before and the labor had increased. And so we had an estimate April. And it wasn't able to be brought to the board. And so that was, but that came from Brandon's.
And this is current.
Okay, because the front date is October 4. Okay.
Thank you.
Would you say that when you got this original bid, is the bid good for two months, three months?
He said three months.
Three months, thank you.
And we, we had just been in contact and he just sent that again, so.
Because they would have to rip it all up. And a lot of it will be labor because it's loose.
Yeah.
Public comment on this subject? A new carpet? Okay. Do you think vote?
Now you.
Now we vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Did we vote?
We messed up.
We messed up. All in favor of the foundation helping to put in the carpet? Say aye please.
Aye.
Opposed? My motion skills are very. And Darlene, you have something else?
Yes, I would like to bring up the meeting room, this. So there's been much discussion with the Big Sandy patrons and the friends of the library on naming the meeting room. And I would just like to say for emergency purposes such as when the fire department was called here and we, they knew exactly where to go, they came, they came through the back door. They knew that this was the meeting room, this is where they came to help our situation. And so when we called 911, they knew that they were coming here. And when we, when we called the ambulance and we said it's in, we have a situation in the front foyer. The ambulance backed up, they were ready to handle the situation in the front of the library. Calling 911, dang it, it's a foyer. And to lessen our confusion during any emergency of the Big Sandy, we would like to call this meeting room, the Big Sandy Library Meeting Room. And if Ann had any input on that.
Any more just discussion on that?
Makes sense.
Makes sense? It's simple, makes sense. Yeah. Okay. Could I have a motion to call this the Big Sandy Library Meeting Room, or is it library? Did you add that?
Big Sandy Library Meeting Room.
Big Sandy Library Meeting Room. Motion?
I move that we name this meeting room the Big Sandy Library Meeting Room.
Second?
I second it.
All in favor of Big?
What, public comment?
God, how many times are there public comment?
It's lots of public.
Okay, is there public comment on the motion? All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay.
I did, I had a couple of people ask about the Fort Ben Library and things and we don't have any signs or plaques or anything. We have the, it's, it's technically the Dorothy McLeish Room. But yeah, so it's not. If there was concern about anything like that, it's, it's for legal purposes, emergency purposes, as long as we all know what we're talking about. We have like in, in our basement, it's we, I mean, we call it the carpeted room, but I think it's officially the Carnegie Room, so. But for legalities and emergencies, that's.
Well, I think. With some emergency. My daughter drives the ambulance and it helps to, if they don't know where, where exactly they're going to be at, give it a short name and there it goes. You know, they're, then they're aware of that, they remember that and they go on with it. Yeah.
She knew where she was going.
Darlene, do you want to do your themes and, and projects? Or do you want me to? It was just what you sent me.
I wanted to bring something else up. At our last staff meeting, September 13th, we were told by Mary that she wanted to read our books from our library. And Emily followed up with an email September 20th, asking us to stop discarding our books. I responded to Emily's email and concern that in August, Sarah and I had been deleting, discarding our books because we had started a project when Sarah was hired and she was officially hired in September, we started going through all of our collection. And we were looking through the broken ones because we only have $8,000 in book budget. And so we, we can't delete all the books that we want to, and so we hold on to them. So we label them, the ones that we can hold on to and aren't falling apart in your face. And so we put a sticker on them and we put them on the front cover. And that's what our project was this year in August. We were going through all the stickers, the ones that we had stickered to see if they were checked out. And if they were, then we were keeping them. If they were ready to say goodbye, that is what we did. We ended up deleting 70 books from our collection. And. If, I mean, if we delete too many books too fast, our shelves are empty. And so that I, I mentioned to Mary that we, we have high school teachers coming in to do research projects. And so that I, I mentioned to Marion that we um, we have high school teachers coming in to do research projects. Through our library and the kids. As a class, come in and they look through our books. They have to write papers. They're looking at old books. No, they're not marked as used. They are then put back on the shelf. Um, and, but they've been looked at. Um. And Sarah was equally concerned with this uh frustration um when we were phoned by Emily, October third. And I wanted to bring to the board upon review that there are several issues with this mandate. Although it was brought up abruptly and nonchalantly, it is a huge change. That would be great repercussions for our branch. I believe in all changes in the draft description should be approved by the board and thus be by the bylaws. Sarah and I, as Dee and Vicky um before me, have all been responsible. For discarding our books. Dee and Vicky also purchased their own books. The reason why this change is so important is because Sarah and I believe that we are the patrons best. We know our patrons best and would most fit to just decide which books we need in our library. Lastly, I want to mention that we were told by Emily over the phone to pick three dates that would work for us to close our branch. In order to accommodate Emily and Marion to come in and discard books. I thought branch closures must be approved by the board. And if I recall correctly, it was never mentioned at the last board meeting. Plus, after said board approval, patrons thus be notified of the closure. Which they have not and never been instructed to do so. I feel that this is a break of protocol and undermining the board. And frankly, unnecessary. The closure would inconvenience our patrons and co-op students. And as previously mentioned, naturally, does Emily and Marion do not reside here? They don't. See our patrons. They simply don't know what our bands need, our branch needs.
I'm sorry, I need to interrupt here. This is Sissy. I think this should have been a closed session.
Sissy, just a minute, please. Um, Madam Chair, Cory Sloan has raised her hand on Zoom to speak. Cory Sloan is the state consultant. Okay.
Cory, would you like to speak?
Hi, hi, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Hi, thank you for letting me um interject here. Um, with respect to your um agenda and your processes. Um, personnel issues, which is this um really sounds like an internal personnel issue is not um. An appropriate topic for an open meeting. Um, there's a right to privacy um. In the state of Montana, right? We take it very seriously in the state of Montana. This sort of thing needs to be discussed in a closed session and there was no closed session noted on your agenda. Uh, and you can't, unfortunately, you can't just add a closed session. Um, so. I would highly suggest that this um topic is tabled. Um, until you can note a closed session, if we're going to continue, if you're going to continue to discuss in this manner. Um, and as your state library consultant, I'm happy to answer further questions about that. Um, but I would. Just in compliance with the law, I would not continue um this topic of discussion.
Thank you, Cory. Is there any discussion? Or any questions for Cory?
Is there a prescribed? Method or plan for discarding books? Is there? And everybody knows that?
Well, that is part of. The dis- the discussion.
Personnel.
Um, yes, so. The board of trustees is in charge of policies and um budget. And the director is in charge of procedures and leading as a procedural.
Right.
Um, issue. So if with respect to Darling's concern, it then turns into a personnel issue. If chain of command or communication or. Any legal advice?
Mm hmm.
Thank you, Cory.
So, so table this until we can have a meeting with the personnel?
That would be an executive session.
Cory, executive session. Cory, does that sound good?
Yep, if you'd like to hold an executive session or closed session, it needs to be noted um. For the public, but it's definitely like not appropriate to hold in front of public. Um, thank you very much for um understanding.
Thank you. Thank you for your information. Okay.
Um, one, one question, Cory. When we do an executive session, in the past, staff have asked to have additional staff present. Um, I think at that time it was for moral support. Is there any legal issue with this?
Um, it is the. It is the um discretion of the, in, in the case of personnel, the person being discussed. Um, if they would like, they can also waive their right to privacy. Um, and that would be like something like including somebody else in their discussion. They can say, I'd like my director to be there. I'd like. You know, the librarian who this issue was with or whatever the situation is, but that is um at the discretion of kind of the person being. Um, discussed. Does that make sense?
Yes, but it's still an executive session even if they waive their right to, to privacy.
That is, that's correct. And if, if there was any desire to waive their discretion today, um there's still no action item on the agenda today. Um, but that's just kind of how that works. I'm happy to send you more information if you're interested.
Thank you. That'd be great.
Of course, thank you. Thanks, thank you for letting me speak.
Yeah, I have one other question because I looked up some information through several sources, including the Montana Library and ALA. Can I talk about this uh reading that was just, it's informational?
I think maybe we should have added it to the agenda.
Well, there is at the um under new business collection management and Marin was going to. Nona requested that Marin go through the, through the procedure, so Marin will address that at that point. I would like to ask you if you could say. Sure. Questions or comments until then.
Okay, do we need to make motions table this?
Um, it wasn't an action item.
Yeah, okay, all right.
We can, Nona, when you and I talk about the agenda, we will make sure that that happens after, and we were gonna look at the meeting dates anyway, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Um, let's see. Excuse me.
We're on the reports.
Brantree course?
Yep. So Darlene, would you like to cover your themes? And you did your project, or well, no, your for September. I'm sorry, your themes for September and your September project?
Um, my themes were self-improvement, uh read a new book, Library Card Sign Up Month. We did a lot of projects with Library Card Sign Up Month. Uh, thanks to everybody that read new their information so we're up to date. Um, and that we can help promote Libby um and get those card numbers out to people that were requesting them. Uh, we did Pirate Day um and Johnny Appleseed.
Thank you. Um.
So for Fort Benton, September, this is in the month of September, themes were Band Book Week. Blind Date with a Band Book, Autumn Music and Musicians. The Human Body, Grandparents, Math, Language Arts, Hispanic Heritage Month. Projects included Mary Jane Bradbury from Humanities Montana. Um, the I Can Connect Program with Carol Bronick. Collaboration with um a few of the Fort Benton High School Eng- English classes and some Band Books Week education. September, yep. So those were September. And then Sammy Jo?
Hello, so um my themes for the month of September were new books and um cozy fall vibes. And then um for projects, I also did a project with Carol Clayton By with I Can Connect and then. I'm still just in the Start Democracy project, so that's where. And that was all I had. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Sammy. Thank you. Do we vote on this? No, no. Okay, moving on to announce for some dates to remember.
Can I ask?
Wait, direct report. I'm sorry.
So on the branch report, can I ask a question while we're there? I'm sorry, this is Sissy.
No.
No, it's not an.
No.
The end. It can be at the end.
It can be at the end. On the, on the branch report, it can be a, under collection management.
Okay, thank you.
Public comment.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, Emily.
I do have, may I ask you a search director, please? Emily, I see that Hywood is, we're keeping totals on Hywood now. I just thought us.
Um, so those titles are, well, it wasn't, it's not in the summer because the library is not open in the summer, so those are checkouts.
For the school.
That are through the computer system for the school.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah. Um, they are part of, um, they're able to be part of the shared catalog through the state, so then if those statistics come out of that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and so that's why it wasn't on the last couple.
Sure.
Emily, you have a report? Um, yes, I would like to start with. The, a Pathfinder meeting recap. So Pathfinder is the state federation that covers our area from, on the High Line from Chinook over to Cut Bank. And then Haver down to Cascade and includes Teton County. Which is Fairfield, Shoto and. Dunn, was it Dunn? Whatever, through there, through that area. Um, Fort Benton hosts. Each twice a year, May and October, because it's kind of the centralized location. It used to go around to different libraries, but then we hosted. I am not the um chair of that or the head of that. That's um the director from Chinook, Wayne County. So we do the boots on the ground part. This year, Jesslyn came as our trustee representative. It's a Pathfinder is an opportunity for trustee continuing education and directors. So it's normally the director and one, one trustee. It doesn't have to be the, the board chair, but one trustee. So we, we met on. October thirty, thank you. Um. And so Jesslyn, would you like to share what?
Sure, I think the most important thing that I got from Pathfinder, thank you again for letting me attend that. Um, was that the commission has awarded four thousand dollars for continuing ed and I'll talk about that later in our continuing ed. Portion, um, but the intent of that was um specifically for trustee training. Um, and that's for each federation, so the Pathfinder alone gets four thousand dollars. Um, and then the other thing I thought that was really great is, and maybe you could explain it better for me, Emily, is the Great Falls Public Library offered to share their LinkedIn learning, which would be an option for. Continuing ed as well for librarians as well as. The trustees. Um, but the big thing is they're really pushing that trustees complete their training and as a group.
And we can talk about that later. Yeah, that's, yeah, continued education.
So, and it's my understanding, so like Jesslyn said, it's four thousand total for the entire federation, so it's not like our library or our system hits four thousand. Um, and that does not go through me. Is my understanding at all. So if you travel to a training, then your travel can be reimbursed up to a certain point, but that is not, that is outside of my purview. Um.
And that wasn't really clarified. How that was gonna go about, they're gonna.
It's still fairly new. That was one that they just passed.
I'm encouraging that we have that um money.
So what Susie McIntyre from Great Falls talked about was the LinkedIn, LinkedIn learning. Um. Normally costs money and so to be able to subscribe to that. And so she is offering that as a, so free. Cory, put in the chat, she can speak to that. As well, is that okay, Madam Chair?
Please.
Okay, so I just wanted to help you um better understand that four thousand dollars is intended, like Jesslyn said. Um, for trustee training, so that would include um paying for presenters. Um, I know that in the past, the MSU Local Government Center has come to do trainings on um. Open meeting law, et cetera. Um, but it would pay for a presenter's speaking fee or travel. And then excess money could go towards trustee travel. Um, the money is sent to the federation coordinator. Who, as Emily said, is the director of Blaine County Libraries, named Valerie Frank, um up in Chinook. Um, but that money goes separately to her. Um, there's also. Other training type of things that that can be um put forward to, so long as the training benefits the trustees. But we know that public libraries in Montana can be incredibly complicated, so there really is. A wide range of training topics that that can um. Go towards, um, as long as they benefit trustees. And just so everybody um is also aware. One trustee is, by the, in the Federation bylaws, in the Pathfinder Federation bylaws, one trustee is um minimum. Um, if multiple trustees are available and interested in attending the Federation meeting, which happens for um. Pathfinder twice a year, both times is in Fort Benton because that's a nice central location um for the area. Um, although some people would probably beg to differ with me. Um. But so if multiple trustees are available and interested, um, that would be absolutely appropriate for trustees to attend. Um. That training. Does that answer questions about the four thousand dollars and what the use is for? Um, since the Pathfinder meeting, they also had a commission meeting where they clarified that. Um, so if anybody was online for the Montana Library Commission, Montana State Library Commission meeting, um, that was clarified there. But yes, they really are encouraging trustee education and participation. Um. Because public library boards are incredibly important.
Cory, do we have uh any issues if we have a quorum present at the training?
If you have a quorum present, so thank you for asking. That's a great question, Tim. Um, if there's a quorum present, you want to note, um, give as much notice as you possibly can for. Um, that there will be a quorum present, but there will be no library business discussed. Um, because it's training, it's not tops of conversation like voting or anything along those lines. And additionally, when there is a quorum present, um, that would be um able to count for your library boards. Um, three hours of required trustee training per year. So every library board in Montana is required to have three hours of um trustee training as a board. There's a separate training that's optional for um. An individual certification track. That's optional, but what's required is the three hours and when there is a quorum present, that would count towards the three hours. Obviously, we would love if the whole board would get this whole training. However, a quorum is the majority and that um is what uh law states.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem. No problem. Let me know if there's any other questions.
I think we might be, we're gonna discuss it later in the continue education, so.
Great, great.
Thank you. Um, Emily, anything else?
Um, yeah, so the, the training that was at this Fall's Pathfinder was about continuing education.
Okay.
So, and Colay is also, she is the state continuing education person, so she is online, so she will be available if we have questions during that part of the discussion.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so next. Um, the policy calendar that we had worked on, um Jesslyn did ask before the meeting started, I will, I can print copies of the newest ones. I did not bring them today. Um. To have, and so we have our. Um, the policy calendar that I printed off last time. So I went through, we have twenty nine. Um, there are twenty nine line items on this calendar. Uh, the standard to meet is to review every one of them at least once every three years. It can be more often than that, but it to be looked at. So if we look at twenty nine over the course of three years, that's a, it's a about one, one per meeting. So what I would like to propose that we look at, and this is not an action item, this is just an idea. Is that, um, so if we do one per meeting. We can hit all of them in a three-year span. Having it laid out this way, and again, it doesn't have to be in this order. This is for simplicity at this point. There would be a potential to tie in any continuing education. That might need to go with any particular um policy. If we start at the top with trustee bylaws in January of twenty twenty five. Which I know is not the beginning of the fiscal year, that's the beginning of the calendar year. But if we look at that, that gives the policy committee. All of November, all of December and most of January to meet. We can meet multiple times with three members on the committee. Remember, we will need to post that forty-eight hours in advance with an agenda. We will, because there will be a quorum where business is being discussed.
Okay.
So that will give the committee three months. Um, to look at that, get the wording. We can ask state, we can ask lawyers, we can ask whoever we need to ask. Um, and then so at the January committee, meeting, if the committee is ready to present to the board. We would do that. And then also at that time, we can, um, the trustee calendar, which is just the meetings. But then we can say, okay, we're gonna look at the mission statement next month. Can you please look at your policies, see what the mission's movement has? If you have concerns. You know, the committee or the committee has concerns, we can meet, we're gonna talk about that one at the next. So then that gives.
Public.
A full month for public notice. Plus a full month for the committee to meet. And then we are going through them methodically, um, so it's more proactive in the approach to the policies than reactive. Um, and we went through all of these, as you can see, these of all. Um, and we went through all of these, as you can see, these have all been done since that time, um, so.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No.
We saw the disciplined policy that go over.
Um, I was taking a look at what we had and that's more, um, so the policy committee can look at that, but. There's already policy in the county handbook, so so I think that we, I don't wanna say default back to that, but I'm, I'm. That would be something we could look into if the county handbook superslips or overrides or is the overarching. I don't know if we need to have a separate one.
Sure.
Yeah. So does anybody have any questions for me besides that?
Any public comment, any question?
Oh, I don't think it's.
There's no. We have to meet separate though, the policy committee.
That's why there's a committee.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
Um, some program updates, we had Chris LaTrey on October first, that was a well-attended program. We had people from around the county plus from Great Falls, that was on Zoom. Um, yesterday, we had the Story Quilt Project, Jean Wakely came from the Twin Cities. We had about thirty people in um, attendance for that program. Um, again, there were people from around the county, um, Fort Benton Geraldine, plus. There was a number of people from the Quilt Guild out of Great Falls. It was a very positive um, program. Number one, it was, it was an amazing project, she did two separate quilts, so it was kind of in two parts, I was only able to watch the first one, but. Um, it was great history, she was a great presenter. The other positive thing that came out, or. Another positive thing that came out was the fact that there were a number of people from Great Falls. And I'd never been in the Fort Benton Library before and they came in, I was able to give my little tour that I give multiple times and. Um, people were, were excited to be in and talked about how beautiful it is. And one lady commented how her grandson visits in the summer and so she tries to take him, she'd taken him to Helena and Great Falls and some different places. So she was gonna try to come to Fort Benton next summer and go to the museums and the Ford and to, and to come to the library. And so that was a very positive. Um, that was a very positive too, we had some people picked out some books from the used book sale and made some donations. It was uh, it was really a lovely, it was a lovely day. Um, we had some cookies and coffee and tea. Um, we don't in Fort Benton or Geraldine, I know for sure, um, have any Humanities Montana or any programming. Scheduled for the rest of the calendar year, but we have started working on programming for um, twenty twenty-five. I had attended the Humanities Montana Ford Meeting with Sammy Joe to talk about the programs we've brought in. And um, so there are some grant opportunities there also. And I'm working with Great Falls more because they were on the Story Cool Project to do some collaborative programming. Um, block booking as it's called for um, Shoto County Performing Arts. To make things more affordable if it's people coming from out of town. Um, and then um, Rich touched on it during his comment, but I would like to bring it back again. I think one thing with the vocabulary that we need to be very aware of as we use vocabulary is there is a strategic plan. Which is one thing, and then there is a capital improvement plan, which is a totally separate, they are very, very different things. Um, Corey and I, uh, well, so Tracy Cook, before she changed to a different federation. Um, asked and solved, that was that camp, that year calendar that I'd broken down quarterly was, is the start. That strategic plan was under that to try to start looking at that. So that is a separate thing. But capital improvement is what I would like to talk about right now. Um, so Rich came and did a walkthrough with me, but we need to do, he is in, in contact with a contractor to come and look. Um. So we need to do some of those things to see what is very necessary, some things just from this week that I need to address. Um, the boiler, we had some serious issues with it last in January. Uh, completely broke down, we tried to bring, I mean, there's only so much Kirby can do as custodian. We brought over. Bill from the courthouse, he tried to look it up on YouTube, he couldn't figure out what's wrong with it, we brought in. Is it Kindred Plumbing out of Great Falls? Who, what is it? Um, and so. I mean, when we have those forty below days and if it doesn't click on and there's no one there to manually reset it, that's when you start looking at serious problems. So we thought we had gotten it limping along, but since it's gotten cold again, I've had to manually reset it every day. And not to be an alarmist, but every time I push that button, I just really hope it just doesn't explode. When it's flashing red at you and you have to hit the manual reset, it's just kinda, okay. Um, so like that's one example of something that, that needs to um, look at. Uh, we had the Women's Club one hundred and ten year um, celebration at the library, I came in, I was, or I was there, um. I think the, the freezer drawer, the fridge hadn't been shut, so there was some water in front, we were trying, which is not a huge deal. So I got that cleaned up, but then I went upstairs while the drinking fountain was running and would not turn off. So I was hoping that the push bar was just stuck, but that was not it, so I took the front off the drinking fountain. I had to turn it off with the crank, thankfully I could find it, because I unplugged it, that didn't stop it. I had Blantzen, Craig Blantzen come over to take a look, the age of the drinking fountain, he said he might be able to find parts for that. But it's not a guarantee, um, he recommends getting a new drinking fountain. I know that might sound like a silly thing, but it, it's nice to have a drinking fountain. Um, the bigger one that I would like to look at right now, I went back through five years of expenses. We have spent three thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars on lighting issues out of Fort Benton Library. Um. I don't know where to buy the globes anymore, we have one globe in the children's room that's missing. It was a lot, they are hard to replace, it's two people needed to replace light bulbs. Um, Bob Tady has been over a number of times, the fluorescent bulbs are getting harder to find. He, if we have bulbs that go out, I call Bob, Bob calls around to all of the Liberty Electric Stores in the state. And they hope to find bulbs, the last time we got a box of bulbs, they were all broken.
Excuse me, are the, they're the old fluorescents?
Well, they're even, no, they're not even this, they're those bulb, like those big bulb. We have talked about it, and so I wanna bring that up again, I did, and I'm gonna talk about, well, I have. We did some looking just at newer, so I, well, this was, I don't know. Um, we had Prestige Electric, Ignacio. Yeah, thank you. Megan Lundey's husband came in and um, installed the fans. That was from um, Liberty Claywinder from twenty twenty-two. So I had him take a look and got a bid on what it would cost to, for just the installation of the fans. Um, so I have that, we went through and found a number of options, Mary and I and Carolyn. Um, so I have that all here to look at at some point, I'm not asking for an action item today. I'm actually, I'm asking to start working on a capital improvement plan and these are some examples. And so, um, again, like the drinking fountain, we're hitting the thirty-year point, the addition to the Fort Benton Library was done in ninety-four. I call it the new side of the library and my children told me I can't, I'm not allowed to say it because it was added in the nineteen hundreds. So. You hit a thirty-year roof, we're at thirty years, we have this boiler and it, and the boiler's in the old part of the building, um. And again, what we talked about with Rich and um, with the carpeting. If the trustees can do this capital improvement plan, you rank it, it helps with grant funding. So then the trustees set the capital improvement plan, they give that plan to the foundation, then the foundation can have a, oh, we can get some. Whatever grants, there's grants available for energy, whatever, there's grants available, then we can pursue those grants. Most of them, last year's, not October, May. One of the Pathfinder meetings, the continuing ed was about um, that longer range planning and grant, finding grants. And a lot of places where you're going to get your bigger grant amounts, they want to see your five-year plan. You can't just say, well, our roof was put on in ninety-four and we're not sure if there was repaired. So I, that's, I would like to, at the next meeting, to add to the agenda for the board to really look at that. And I, I would like to ask, I think we can just do, I mean, for Rich and I to continue researching that, that's not any decision making. That is coming and saying, the refur came and he says you need an entire new roof, it's gonna cost us much. Or the plumber came and he says a boiler is gonna cost that much to give the, the trustee boards.
But there's nothing wrong with getting the bids, I, we would, I think that's good that you know. You know, boilers this, lights this, yes.
Yeah, so how much do we have in, if we have funds through the county for the large improvements?
Well.
I know five thousand dollars in order to.
So like the drinking fountain is gonna be under that.
Yes.
Cause it was, I think Craig said, um. Around, I don't know, but it was under five, so.
When do we start on the five-year, when we start on the plan?
We need to have a.
We have a committee.
It sounds like the foundation's trying to take it on.
Yeah, so.
Like it sounds like Rich is basically willing to start spearheading the capital improvement plan and then bring us out.
Okay.
I saw, I have some of the paperwork of the.
But the capital improvement.
So I believe in those, in that financial report, I don't know what page it is, it's a page one of one. It's after the breakdown of the individual branch, branches.
On this one, this one's or an old one?
No, this month.
Okay.
Um, so. Shoto County Trial Balance for the Accounting Period nine twenty-four, so this is at the end of September. Um, total assets seventy-one thousand.
Twenty-seven.
So that's the, that's the available amount right now, so yes, that is something.
We have that.
And is that one of those things we have to keep a certain balance?
Um, it's not necessarily that you have to keep a certain balance, they don't like it to grow too large. And you wanna make sure you do have cash on hand in case there's like catastrophic failure of open taxes or something.
Yeah.
Cause I think you talked about it, it'll budge you time that there, you can't spend down your reserves. Um.
Yeah, well.
That's kinda different.
Yeah.
This is the goal, you know.
Okay, this is.
Today.
I, I think you probably should.
Does anybody have that, that, that plan, that twelve-month?
Oh, I did.
The big.
Yeah, and we also have something that. Now, the breakdown from the, from our trustee handbook. And the trustee handbook.
Darlene has it, Darlene, you have the, no?
Um, Madam Chair, yes, um, Cynthia Lennington would like to make a comment just about the history of the boiler, is that?
Well, not exactly the true boiler, but the Golden Age Center, I'm Secretary of the Golden Age Center in Fort Benton. And if you're going to do anything boiler-wise, we've been. Working for over a year, because in Fort Benton, we don't have a lot of options. There are only a couple of boiler places and I mean, we, we wanted bids and we're two years out. And so if, if you're gonna do anything spoiler-wise. You need to.
Yeah.
To look at, I know, because we, we've really been stung at the Golden Age Center about getting a new boiler. And that building. But it, it was built a long time ago, but they, they just say, well, we haven't looked, but it will be several months before we can come and look. And we're booked out.
It's gonna be three years before you can do anything.
So boiler, boiler things are not easy at all. I mean, there's a lot of other things that are gonna be easier than.
Well, that's probably gonna be true in all the remodeling, cause it's all gonna be, take a long time.
Yeah, but feel like for Montana.
Well, and all boilers seem to be like a hundred years old.
To see the, if a boiler, you visualize it, it's a hundred years old.
Yeah.
So.
Any other comments? But for the boiler, if you're going to look at re-ropping and all this stuff, I would put boilers up at the bottom, okay?
Okay, so it would look like this, is what it looks like. So.
I left you.
Here, this. Compare the roles of the library board and the director, it was in there.
Um. Should we? Rich, would you like to comment? Do you want, do you want some of us on? Committee with you? Or, or do we do these at a meeting? Emily, do we start? Um, at the end of a meeting, did we start?
The way I envision it is that we'll meet with a contractor or two to just get general estimates. Nothing, nothing that's a firm estimate, because we don't have it prioritized during construction dates. But I just left the room here to take a phone call from Nylund Contractors in Fort Benton. And meet with you next Friday afternoon, a week from this Friday.
Okay.
Afternoon, and uh, I'll. Try to find out from the room that it is and be there too, but we're just gonna do a walk around, like she did with me. And we'll just take a look at things and let them get back to us, at which point. Um, she and I will put together and, and Tim probably too, we'll put together uh, the capital improvement. Plan without prioritizing anything, because that'll be the function of the trustees.
So we're gonna be having an information, an information finding committee that hears what the contractor said, rather than all five of us trying to meet with contractors.
Okay.
Which contractors love, I'm sure.
So it does say here, on the roles of the library board and director, the director, I mean. Um, we monitor the budget expenditures.
I'm not sure, I would suggest that we do make a committee from their suggestions and then. Once we have the suggestions, we know how to prioritize, obviously boiler probably will be number one, but I think instead of having all five of us meet. You would have that committee to make that.
And then come back.
Yeah, and then bring that before the board, so the, your group who are touring them. And finding those suggestions would bring it to the committee and then the committee can bring it before the board in a prioritized. What did you call it?
Yeah, and Jesslyn and I and Rich.
Yeah.
We'll be on that, so we don't have a quorum, because it's just Jesslyn and I.
So we could leave it at that.
I think so, we can bring back information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that could be our committee.
And I think part of why Rich was bringing up Kim was the fact that she is, had, was designated as the grant writer, I believe.
Yeah, at this point, I'm the, so, although I think more than one would be helpful.
Well, yeah, but just right now, that.
Yep.
But as chairman.
Do we need to move on that?
I'm not to create. Corey, can we ask? Yes, please. Corey, do we need to have a motion to form a committee?
I don't believe so. Um. I don't believe so.
So we can take on, so it would be. Take volunteers?
Jesslyn and Kim, everything.
So far on both, the foundation.
Yeah, it just makes sense, yeah.
Okay, and then.
The chair just needs to form it, sorry, excuse me, Madam Chair, you just need to form the committee as the.
Okay, I'm uh, former committee of Jesslyn and Kim. To be with Rich to talk over things and then by the next meeting, you will come back and give us details.
Yep.
Does that sound good?
Yep, we can plan a report.
And if you need another person, um, if you need someone else.
Are we gonna have a meeting in November?
We were, we're talking about that, yeah. Okay, we, November, December.
Gotcha.
Yeah, okay, is that good? Alright. Good, and prioritize the needs.
Yeah, cause there may be like infrastructure rooms and different things like that.
And especially like the boiler, um, I just had to replace part of my stuff, you get it on the list as a priority. You know, we might not get it for two years or something, but get it up there, yeah.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
Um, that is all that I have unless anyone on the board has policy or budget questions, concerns that I have not already addressed.
Okay. Any other?
Discussion.
Just announcements?
Yeah.
Okay, we are on to the announcements, the branches will be, election day is, is November fifth. So they will be closed. Um, the Veterans Day is, uh, November eleventh, all branches, Shoto County Library System will be closed. Um, eleven twenty-eight, all branches will be closed for Thanksgiving Day. And then, um. Let, let's see, can we move on to unfinished then? Okay, unfinished business, there's a closure, um, the day after Thanksgiving. Um, they've asked to be, have it closed.
Um, I'd make that motion.
You make the motion to have it closed?
I make the motion, and just to follow up, Emily, this is all branches requesting it, I make a motion that all branches be closed on November twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four.
Do I second? Okay, on favor of the, uh, branches being closed on. Public comment, okay.
This, this is using your personal time, correct?
Uh, vacation time.
Vacation time, thank you.
Okay, any other comment? Hey, now we will vote, all in favor of being closed on the twenty-ninth, right? Eleven twenty-nine, uh, Black Friday, we can all go shopping, all in favor, say aye. O's? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next one, um. For Fort Benton, I don't know about Geraldine, uh, Fort Benton and Big Sandy have, um. Christmas stroll, and so they've asked to be open on twelfth to seventh. And any, any.
Is this one we usually do, uh, book?
Yes. Well, it for those, yeah.
Any discussion?
So is this gonna be, is this any worry about overtime or?
So what we normally try to do is balance, so Carolyn will take one of her four hour days during the week and. Not work that, like that Tuesday, and then she will work four hours on Saturday instead, so we try to balance it that way, so it's not overtime or.
Thank you guys for wanting to do it.
Darlene, you, what do you guys, what do you do?
To be able to have the friends with me and be open for Christmas roll. Um, a couple of hours.
Okay, couple, yeah, and see, there's also in Big Sandy, there's always junior high volleyball tournament, I mean basketball tournament, so that draws a few parents away. Like Darlene, we just got a sign on there, yeah, so, okay, do we need, need them?
Yep.
I would like a motion for the library to be open for Christmas stroll in whatever branches has it. Um.
I move at the libraries. And Fort Benton, Geraldine and Big Sandy, can state that on twelve seven twenty-two four.
So second?
I'll say.
Okay, now public comment.
I guess I have a question as a board, but is, are we stressing that they shift their schedule so there's no overtime or are we fine with overtime?
We, we shifted it last time.
Okay, so all branches.
Yep, so we even only do it for hours.
Okay.
No.
Yeah, and it's not all day, is it, Darlene?
Uh, last year we were intended to.
Yeah, that's what ours are too, yeah.
My, thank you. Okay, I guess my question would be just a question about, about, uh, changing the hours of the library, which I see you have that on there. And, um, I think, uh, what? Do you have it down here?
Yeah, we, we just have library open.
Okay, no, it was, it actually, whenever the library's hours change, like, let's say into your fall. And, or when you shut down a library, that all comes on the board and then we vote on. That was just what I was going to.
Okay. Um, it's been moved and seconded that we're open, am I right? Um, do, would all in favor say aye? I didn't finish all that, but all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Christmas stroll is on.
I think the library is to for, for doing this for the community, so it's a kudo. And also a kudo for Emily for working the humanities.
Yes. Um, okay, on to new business, continuing education, uh, we can maybe ask Corey, is she on there?
Well, I think Jesslyn was, had prepared some comments.
Yeah, but we could also ask Corey and Colay eventually, as they want to expound on what I have to present. And as I said earlier at the, um, Pathfinder meeting, it was stressed that we, um. Look into our continuing education and make that as a group, um, I was under the impression, I was under the impression that we each individually had to do three hours. But we do have to do that as a forum, um, so there were examples at the Federation and then I did. Um, tune into the Montana State Library Commission meeting and, um. They were discussing continuing that as well there. Um, but mostly our administrative rules do state that we have to do this as a forum, so on the Montana State Library. Website, there's several examples of how we could add that in, um, it could be twenty minutes. Before our meeting, um, where we just all meet together before a meeting and watch a short video, we could have Corey or Colay come and. Plan for, um, like a one hour meeting where we all get to have the same thing, hear the same thing and then discuss it. Um. Overall, I just think it needs to be, um. Made into our strategic plan, we, uh, and Colay also stress this, that. Um, as a board, we should have this in our strategic plan to do continuing ed and get those three hours together. Um, there's lots of different examples, um, I have a whole list of what the Montana State Library provides for library board members. I didn't get that to you, but, um, we could maybe share that with the whole group. Um. Would you, but do you want, Darlene, we made copies? If you're available to, but I'm sure we don't have to, um. And then there are examples of how we can do the trustee video training and agendas on a Montana State Library. Website, I didn't plan anything, I didn't do that for us, um, but I'm happy to take that role and be in conversation with, um. Colay and Corey to get that put in place, um, but I'm up for any suggestions and. Wanted to present that for all of us, because I think that's important that we do our continuing education as a group.
So when you, when you say, I'm sorry. Okay, when you say the three hours, it is, it's not like if I take a half hour and you take a half hour, it's not added up. They want three hours where we're all taking the training at the same time or?
It doesn't have to be the same, same time, like we could each watch the same video, but we have to have a twenty, we have to have discussion about it.
Okay.
So that it counts as, we did it as a group.
Okay.
There's examples of it, I'm probably not explaining it the best.
No, I think.
If Corey and Colay have any suggestions on that, I'd be happy to hear them as well.
That was the other question is, if it's on video that we.
Yeah, we can watch it and then come together.
And the other thing, when we were talking about the calendar and looking at it, I was wondering if. You know, I have some of those monthly, that we could use a monthly meet or monthly time, not to have a meeting, but to do.
That's a good, good suggestion.
Yeah, or a short meeting, very basic meeting or something and then watch the video.
We would have to notice it if we all got together, but we could let them know, like, we're going to be discussing the training, public is welcome.
It's my understanding that you posted as there is, will be a quorum, but there is no business being.
From eleven thirty to twelve or whatever it is, that the actual agenda doesn't start until.
Any other discussion? That's good, thank you, Jess, and then I think, I think it's good, yeah, that we do. And do we have, we don't have, we can separate it out into every other month or something, it doesn't have to be, yeah.
So, so. Would you do that for us then?
Yep.
I will.
Yep.
Appreciate that.
So, just to clarify, you want me to figure out, I mean, that's where it's gonna be hardest schedules, um. I mean, I can work with you, Emily, too, on, on the strategic plan too, and figure out what months work best and if we actually want to. Because I would like the entertaining idea of what, um, you guys think of having meetings as. An education time instead of an actual meeting.
Yeah, so one of the things that can happen, oh, I want to say this, this was in the chat from Corey. Um, thank you, Jesslyn, for prioritizing continuing the education, so I can, Corey, um. So one of the things that Corey can come and do as a trustee training, it's much like when Tracy came and we worked on the.
Yeah.
Bylaws and when Pam Henley came and we worked on the collection development. Um, Corey can come and do a training on strategic planning. Or she can come, there's Robert's Rules, or there are some different. Trainings that was, Corey actually presented in Livingston yesterday on, on strategic planning, so then it can be tailored. If she comes, it can be tailored to our particular board, and so it'll be a more focused training on what we need to work on, so. Um, it would need to come from the, from the trustees as a whole, like if we would prefer to bring her for two hours or an hour and a half, I mean, it, it doesn't have to be the whole training at once, I don't think. But that is one of the options.
Yeah, well, and as we're moving into winter, is there a possibility that we pick, maybe possibly over by email, like we pick. One of these online self-paced sessions and then all zoom in to discuss it, like, do the online training at our own pace.
During the blizzard?
Right.
Yeah. All right, I think for a video like that, like, that would work as a discussion.
Okay.
Um, and but it's my understanding and Corey, please speak up if I misspeak, but. Um, for something that she would do, it's better with everyone in person if possible. So.
But we know which funds are very important, like our.
Where strategic planning is on our list of to-dos, I think it would be helpful to have Corey come and speak with us on that and then we could move forward with.
I agree.
Our strategic.
Okay. Hi, it's Corey, I just wanna chime in and say I'm happy to come up to Fort Benton and offer a training. Um, and to speak to Kim's question about doing something self-paced. Um, and then meeting online, I understand you don't all live in exactly the same, you know, neighborhood or location. Um, and I don't live up there either, um, and in the wintertime when things can get kinda nasty with the roads. Absolutely, if people have the ability to watch a video on their own and then have, um, a capacity to get together as a quorum. Hopefully as the whole board, um, we can lead a discussion and talk about, um, what. We've gained from this, questions we have, that sort of thing, Colay, um, who's also online today. Is the Continuing Education Coordinator for the State Library and she spends a ton of time making sure that they have, you have the right resources. And the right questions for discussions, so that everybody can get as much as possible out of these trainings. And I, I, as, to tie it back to what Emily was talking about with your policy committee, um, you can also, the training is. Completely, um, decided by your board, what you need to focus on, by your board and your director on what's most important. Um, at the time, so if you're going through policies, um, you can also tie your trainings to be relevant to those policies and things like that. So, um, it's all, it's all customizable to your needs, so. Does that answer, does that clarify, clarify things?
Yes, and you're in Bozeman?
I'm in Bozeman, um, and I'm happy to come, um, I think you're about three hours and some change from me. Um, sometimes in the winter, you know, that can be a little dicier, but, um. Happy to, happy to do things virtually, I know that there's a lot more gained out of face to face, but I know that you all aren't all in the same exact location either. Um, and so to somebody, I can't remember who mentioned adding it to your meeting, um, is a, a very popular thing that lots of boards in the state do. They add half an hour or an hour, I know, you know, sitting through a potentially hour and a half meeting and then doing another. Hour or something like that, some libraries do, um, every Monday for a month and get their whole C E at done in September or something like that. Um, so it really kind of depends on what, or some libraries do one four hour training and then it covers them for the year. Um, so it really kind of depends on your availability and your abilities to get together, we know you're all busy people and that this is a volunteer position, so. We really do appreciate, um, prioritizing this, um, it's really important, because as we've said before. Library boards are really different from other boards in the state, so thank you.
And I think we're in kind of a weird position where I think every single one of us lives in a rural setting, like. Not a single one of us lives within an incorporated town, this board, so. Winters.
Get your boots out.
Right.
So, you will coordinate with them?
I surely can, okay. I really like the idea of doing it by video, but then we can get them all together and discuss, so we can take notes as we. Do our videos, you know?
Okay.
Uh. I'm not sure, Corey. Since we didn't have to do an action item, I did list that as action, cause I wasn't sure what was going to happen, but is that similar to the. For Nona to just make the statement, so it's in the minutes that, um, Jesslyn is going to explore that, do we need that?
I'm not, I don't think there's any action item needed for this, it's just a statement by the board chair, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion on that topic? Okay, uh, we are moving on, continue, let's see, collection management, we'd like to talk about this.
Okay, so give me one second.
Okay, and then, all right. We take a five minute break.
Your sermon.
I, I call a five minute.
I'm gonna mute the reporting, everyone online, it's one, five minute break, one.
Red light is off, the. The owl is now dash on to.
We like to talk about collection management. And I think Marin. Is going to present and we are not talking about personnel, it doesn't have to be closed, we're just gonna talk about collection management.
Procedure.
Procedure.
Okay, so, yes, I did offer, um, to come in on a Saturday, uh, to avoid closing the library. Reading takes, uh, time and concentration, and it's really difficult to be managing. People coming in and discard, like, you know, going through, like. Like really examining a collection, and also if you pile of books that we're gonna discard, some people come in and go, wow, that's my favorite book. It's like, okay, but it hasn't been checked out in seven, five years, I'm sorry, um, we are a system. So it is important to know what each library has, um, and to be fiscally responsible. If there's a, if there's a perfectly good copy of a book we have in Port Benton, like I've done, I've done this multiple times. Oh, can we get this book, like, we can just have our copy? Never been checked out, all this, like, that we don't have to buy anyone, like, you can have ours, or if I'm here and I'm like, oh, like, I've been. Like, a lot of the. Books that, like, we have, there are sets of, like, I'm like, oh, man, I would love. Like, we have a bunch of, like, really battered Agatha Christie books. If we could possibly, like, nothing, but like, you know, if it's possible to to borrow them. For me, you know, like, just, we want to be able to, we need to be able to share, and, um. You know, like, I have, are we, sometimes we get donations of books that are in great condition. Like, I've got a stack of Dyers or Wendy kid books that I'm like, okay, should anyone need a replacement of this? I can just, I can just be like, here you go, here, here it is. I'm, I'm not familiar with each, with what each community, uh, wants or needs, um, and I'm, that's why I want to do this, um. It's so I can be more familiar, I want to be able to know, um, like. Sammy Jo has a running list of books she wants, I'm like, yeah, ma'am, your bucket is too small, but I'll keep an eye out. And as much as I have an idea of what her people want, being there and knowing, okay. This is a well loved copy. I know we have an extra copy of this somewhere, like, it's, it's, it's knowing what is available and knowing what we have. Being, being here and being, being able to go, man, these kids love Eric Carle. Like, wow, I'm gonna make sure we have all the Eric Carle, you know, whatever, whatever it may be. Um, or, yeah, these dinosaur books are very, very old, they are well loved, they're very popular. But they're also from nineteen fifty six. They may not have the best pictures, they may not have, you know, they may need to have up to date information. Um, and students who come in and use the books, they deserve to have books that are up to date. You know, there, there, there is one book that I was trying, I've been, I've been considering reading. In Fort Benton, and I was like, well, it's like on divorce law, so like, you know, it's not, it's not like it's like. I don't know how much it's changed, but whatever, finally, I was like, you know, it has never been checked out. So I looked at it and there was a floppy disk in the back, so I had been sitting on the desk, like, you know. Like, oh, there is, you know, someone may come in and be like, I need a book on divorce law, it's like, okay, here we go. Do you have a floppy disk? Um, you know, just, just being aware of like, what is absolutely outdated versus what is available? You know, we have so many books on a certain subject, if we need to share with another branch. We can absolutely bring that, that way we don't have to invest in an entire new section, um. You know, if, if, and if we do get rid of a lot of books, which should, which it should happen. There are so, there are so many orders that I'm waiting, that are in in my office, so I'm waiting to. Know if there's space, um, know if there, if I should give them to be examined or Geraldine. That I'm just waiting on to kind of figure out, I've got four giant, um, preview boxes, so publishing companies send us. Boxes of books that they're like, please buy these, and usually I just kind of laugh at the price because they're. Astronomical, but there are some where I'm like, this is a really great investment. So I want to know what the condition of the animal books is, like, do they have quality pictures, do they have? Um, you know, what reading level is it at, like, are all of the books available for? A certain age, only like textbooks, you know, it's, it's just, it's just good for me to be aware, um. I'm gonna be doing this in Geraldine also, um, it's just, it's just something that. Is is a standard procedure, um, reading, it just haven't been done for a while.
Were you gonna talk about the crew method? Or no, you don't have to.
No.
So in our collection.
I can.
Well, in our collection development policy that we recently redid. Um, there is a whole section on weeding. That talks about how it happens, so there were, Darlene brought up some points about how things have been done in the past. And how things have been done since I started as director, some things like that, and so we. What I'm looking at right now as director for procedures is. Moving forward, we need to make sure we are using best practices, being as fiscally as, fiscally as responsible as we can with county monies. And making it consistent for the county wide system. In best practices and standard library practices in any size system, there is one person who does collection management. Um, that's be it purchasing, cataloging, those different things, and so. Maybe it has never been done this way in the past, but we would like to work with all of the librarians throughout our entire system. To make sure that we are presenting the best for Shoto County residents as a whole. So that, like I, like I just said, that might look a little bit different, this is also, this process that we are talking about right now is to get started with. An inventory for all of the books that we have available and resources available. Um, county wide, when the big Sandy library was moved from. The old building to the new building, um, I mean, there's just is stuff that. Is missing, there's stuff in Geraldine that's missing, we have stuff in Fort Bennett says that it's missing, these are things, but we need to do a complete inventory. And this project was the initial phase of that. Um, like Marin said, we're gonna try to do it on a Saturday to stay out of the way of, uh, patrons. And there's not, we're not planning on getting the big Sandy library or the Geraldine library or the Fort Benton library. Um, there is a process that we have, Marin found a brand new document, um, just the other day, that we can make a copy. I mean, she has it in a binder, it's a hundred and eight pages for anyone that would like to read it, I think leading, there's probably continuing education for the. For the trustees that would be available about reading, um. So if people have questions about that, is it different, it, it may very well look different. Um, when you learn something new and when you know better, you do better. Not a reflection on any personnel or any past personnel, things are just different, computers are different, everything's different, so. Janet, would you, you said you had some comments?
Could I just add real quick? Like, I want to use this as an opportunity to discuss the the collection with the librarians at each branch. And because it's, I mean, it's, it's one thing to continuously email or, you know, add to a list, but I do want to be able to. You know, focus on a section at a time and say, okay, what, what are we missing, what, what do we have too much of, what should we invest in? I know that there are gonna be some books that people want to keep, by all means, let your librarians know, like, I mean. If there are some that you go, I, if I'm afraid that you're gonna read this, if I have it, you know, just, just let them know, like, they're the full. Full series in Fort Benton that I've had someone go, like, if you get rid of this, I'm like, well, hopefully we ever do get rid of it, but should we do, like, I mean, it's, there are options. It's not like we're taking them on to dumpster and burning.
You're not going to do that. Sorry.
Yeah, no, um, you know, there's, there's, we put him in the book sale, um, yeah, I'll probably end up filling boxes up and taking him to the. Fort Benton spot for a book sale, um.
Or here.
Or here. Yeah, or here, depend, depending on, on, like, if it's an overwhelming or not. But. Yeah, no, this is, this is just, this is just on, like, a pretty standard thing of just like. How old is the book, what is the quality of the book?
So that's all, that's all available.
There, there is a technique called musty, was a great acronym, uh, misleading or factual inaccuracies. Ugly, worn out beyond ending or rebinding, as is for superseded by a new edition or better source. Uh, trivial, no discernible literary or scientific value, irrelevant to the needs. And interest of your community and elsewhere, easily attained from another's source, so I mean, it's just, it's just.
Marion, could you do like a ballpark number of hours for the amount of training you've done to be. Qualified as a leader, like, is it like, is it like eight hours or is it like forty?
I just, like, this is something I've been doing since I started working, um.
So you've never done like continuing education on or?
Going to school for this?
Like, it's not just like pull up a report.
I mean, it certainly can be.
Those are asked, that's an aspect.
That's an aspect, but, you know, to, to get it to kind of like a, it's like a cleansing. Gotta separate the wheat from the chaff, right? Like, you, you just kind of, like, they're, I'll, I've tried to weed a section at the library, like. At least once a month, um, I think that's healthy, especially since like, there's like one corner where we can never get any books in. Because that, like, apparently the seeds are where all the authors have their last name, um, and so. It's a constant, it's, I mean, that's what Cruz stands for, it's continuous review evaluation reading, um, and so it's just, it's just a practice. Thing, um, and, and that's, that's what I'm, it's, I'm excited to be able to come in and say, hey, this is, this is how. We should all be looking on reading. Thank you.
Yeah, so I have looked this up and actually, I can't write down every spot that I found the information. So here is collection development, uh, library guidelines, it says here, libraries working with their assigned areas. Of collection development or particular libraries are primarily responsible for meeting the collection. That's what it says, and it's written April seventeenth, twenty twenty four, but this is the information I found by several sources. So I went to the Montana Library, and I actually did look at ALA because they have so much information. The person responsible for reading books in a library. Emily, if you'd like to see it, the person responsible for. Reading the books in the library, and actually, I had such trouble time doing reading the books, it kept up, copying up his wedding. So the word is actually deselection or calling, so anyway. Depends on the type of library, but it's usually the librarian of the said library. The review process may include multiple libraries, such as when you have branch libraries in different towns or areas. Reading is a process of regulating regularly removing outdated or irrelevant library resources. It is also called deselection or calling. Reading makes room for new addition and titles that are more interest to the community that serves that area in particular. And that's what kind of caught my thing, the school librarians often have overall responsibility. But it's helpful to work with teachers and subject specialists, like your English teacher or whatever. So it says it should include content that is outdated or obsolete. Content that's biased, racist, or sexist, content that is irrelevant to the patrons' needs. That is too mature or immature for patrons. So I, that's probably a little bit of something that, um, Darlene said that she knows her community. And so, and she does have a lot of. A lot, she has a very broad about it, people of different areas that come into the library. And use the library and love the library for not just meeting rooms, but just to study.
Yep, good, thank you, Janet. Um, any other discussion? Or do you, does anyone have any other questions about deselection? Thank you just for clarifying that, I appreciate having that communication, and I appreciate that you say you want to communicate with the librarians. And work with the community. And clarifying that for all of us, because I think that's very important. Listen to our taxpayers and our patrons.
I'm, I'm always happy to get like an email saying, hey, I wish we had a library, like, I, I do what I can. I do what I can, but there is, there are other things that are involved, like agility and.
Okay, so. Are you planning to come tomorrow?
Well, um, if Janet said we can't without board approval. So then we would have to pick a different time to do that. Unless the, well, I mean, I don't know, yeah, what do you think?
We can't do a vote unless it says actual item.
That's just my concern with that would be that we didn't really notify patrons. I know that puts a damper on things, but.
Not the executive session?
This is just reading.
It's my understanding that it's happened a number of times in the past, Debbie woman had come up and closed the library, Sandra had come up and closed the library, so. Um, do you, would you like me to work with Darlene and Sarah to pick a different day or two days? Depending, I mean, because it is quite a substantial, um. Of like, I mean, the Fort Benton library would probably, if we were to do it all at once, would take like a week if we were to, to do it all at one time. Um, the other hope is that moving forward as a team, that. Will kind of level back off, not back off, but like level out and, um. To get Marin into the library, into this particular library more. Um, to communicate with the librarians and to, to do it as a team. And to get it worked out, but it is a big, big job, and if you're trying to. That was yesterday with that quilt presentation, it was very hard for me to finish getting materials ready, I stayed an extra hour yesterday because. When patrons are coming in and out, it's very hard to do those things, and so.
But they're particularly on the computer, aren't they, that shows you the assets have been tricked out and through.
Oh, but there's, there's a lot, I mean, there's a lot to it, and it's like literally touching basically every single book, they've done. A fabulous job up here with, uh, making sure that the, the spine labels are all the same. That is one project to go that they.
Smaller libraries than the books we have in Fort Benton.
Right, and so that's why we were hoping, we're hoping that it just takes one full day at the beginning, and then it can be done. As a monthly process and that communication across.
I think you have the difficulty in Big Sandy, uh, putting down the tiles, so maybe you can work that in.
So we were, actually, Mary and I talked about that just yesterday afternoon, um, so that if it has to be closed, we have to move everything. Anyway, that that will be something that.
It does have to be known before.
Right, right, but hopefully, I mean, for something like, they're not gonna come the day after tomorrow, um, can we have Sammy Joe, are you still on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, could you please, um, just speak to what, like, what, I don't know if I can turn this, do you need to see or can you just listen to it? Um, kind of what your process has been.
For waiting? So I will go.
For waiting, um, so I will go like Maren said, section by section as. Sections are getting a little overrun or full or we're getting too much of something in a section. And I will pull based on what has not been checked out in a long time or by what we have doubles and triples of in. Big Sandy and Fort Benton, and then I can borrow just because I am limited on how much space I have. And then I just put my books in boxes and then I wait to either send them to Fort Benton for Maren to go through. Or for Maren to come over here and go through and tell me that, yes, we can weed those. Um, I don't just do it and get rid of them and send them. Um, I do double check with Emily and Maren that they can be weeded.
And that's much different, like, as you all know, it's a much smaller space and a much smaller collection there also.
So you have to choose a day, do we have? Well, I think that's a great idea if you do it the same time as the carpet.
So as we look at that, um, because we would like to get started on it.
Yes.
To, um, so if, if Darlene could, um, connect with Brandon's, is that what it's called? And to see if that can get on the calendar and then we can.
Yeah.
Um, again, it wasn't listed as an action, I'm sorry, you don't think it's evocable today. Um, but like, what if he decides he is gonna come in?
I don't think we usually have to have action items on normal library procedure. That'd be, that'd be awful if we had to.
Yeah, that's.
Take emotion every time you pay.
So as long as, basically, as long as we post it publicly. We'll try to get that both into the Mountaineer and the River Press along with online, on the website, on Facebook pages and.
Coordinated with Darlene.
With Darlene, oh, yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
All right, great.
That'll be good.
And, yep. I think we did talk about ideally, we would do inventory while the, the carpet is been done that way.
Yes.
This, um.
You can put them back the.
We can put them back. And then, so, um, that which is inventory will be.
Okay.
So it would be nice to get this kind of.
Because this is a separate.
Inventory, so we could get that.
At that counter, I will be sure to inform the board.
Even an email, if we all just had an email.
Yeah.
Said that.
So you can't really do business, but I can say.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is that fine?
Okay, for me.
All right.
Thank you, thank you, Maren.
Thank you, yes.
Presenting that and Sammy Joe. So that does bring us to that next, oh, sorry, public comment.
Oh, yeah. Public comment is really public. Yes.
I just wanted to thank you, Mary, for clarifying that too, because after the comment, I'm, yeah, I was like. So I think just listening, I think that it'd be beneficial for everyone to improve communication. Um, the, if it's in policy, and, um, I guess it was updated April seventeen twenty four. To let everyone know what that policy is and where they stand as their job description. You know, and if you're gonna work together to let everyone know that you're gonna work together, I think that sounds great. I think it. It just sounded like, you know, it's gonna be near and and no one else, and there's no input, and so it just kind of sounded more like. Yeah, um, so, yeah, I'm, I just wanted to say that, but, um. Thank you for clarifying.
Sweet pinky manager. Um, I think war or clo- library closures do need to be approved by the.
Yes, they do.
Um, just to clarify that, and that can be looked up in the policy or anything, so ahead of time is important, especially during those working hours. Um, and then I would love to know the procedure on asking for a book that is being called. I did ask for a book one time, I got up into little tiny pieces. Um, so what did I do wrong there? How can I, I presented it to my.
That was, I know, that was a miscommunication. I'm very sorry that it happened. It's, I mean, just.
I know, I mean, but and that's.
So I guess maybe, I, I mean, how do you want people, because I feel like I went to my director, which is what I'm supposed to do. To your library. Into Sammy Joe, and I went to my director, and I still.
Yeah, and that's.
It literally got cut up in.
Well, it was broken, like.
I wanted it, I broke it, didn't care. Exactly the way I was.
No, it was just, um.
Are we bound by the usual county rules that we have to put a unused inventory out for bid? I think if the school gets rid of a bus, they can't just, so and so wants a bus and hand it off or.
It's my understanding that books are not like.
Because it's such a small.
Corey did put in the chat, when people say public comment, I, I don't know, Judy, sorry, but to make sure you say your name. Not just kidding. But, yeah, I mean, we, we will do.
I just wanted to know if I did something.
No.
If I needed to do something different in that situation.
Yeah.
And thank you for reiterating about closing, because we just voted on whether or not they could close on Friday.
So, yeah. Come up on, uh, what is that day? Black Friday.
Maybe we could start an auction as a fundraiser.
All right. Any other. Is that any public comment on that?
Any other?
Sissy, are you still there?
I am here, so I can talk.
Say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Sissy Felton. And Madam Chair, I don't know who to address this to, so hopefully you can help me out with this. On the forbidden webpage, there are branch statistics for each branch. I don't know if you guys have looked at those, but I would encourage that. Because I don't know if you know, I do QA and statistics pretty much all day long. And I am trying to figure out how Big Sandy's library every month can have over fifteen hundred people. Or coming to that, counting fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred people a month. That's seventy two people a day. Uh, I don't know if somebody can look into that and explain how the stats are done. But, uh, if fifteen hundred people a day, Shoto, uh, Big Sandy is less than six hundred people total. So I just want somebody to.
Thank you.
Answer this.
Yes.
Or how that, how that works. I, I'm having a hard time mathematical to see how that works.
Hey, thank you. Janet, do you want to address that? Well, part of that is also Facebook, and you'll see where.
It's not on there anymore. I pulled it out when I was requested. It's at the bottom, but it's not included in these stats at the top.
So I think I talked about how much Big Sandy is involved in their library. There's parents that come in and drop off kids. I mean, in Fort Benton, you have any places to go. For that, Big Sandy does not. They drop off their, they, they take their kids to wrestling or practice here. Whether they have music lessons, all the things, and they do come in here. And the parents do come in and they do visit the library. Um, I've been here when we've had our library full. So is anybody from Big Sandy would like to speak to that?
Okay, Jody.
My name's Jody Thornton, and. I don't usually come to the library very often. But when I, I have two grandsons in Haver, and I'll bring them to the library. And there's always kids and parents in here, and, um, especially in the summertime. And I can, and I do come in. Occasionally, as I'm walking, I'll walk in and say hello to Darlene and. You know, look at a book and see if there's something I want to read. And I can easily see that they would have seventy two people a day coming in to the Big Sandy Library. It's just, there's that much traffic on the main street and, um. It's easy, easily accessible, and it's a very nice, quiet, beautiful place to come in and. And read a book. And I'd also like to comment on the weeding. I would hope that in your process of doing that, that, um, the books that. Sarah and Darlene are going through and figuring out that need to be done. Are the ones that you consider to be, you know, to put a major. You put your thumb on that scale as opposed to any other book, so.
For sure. Um, what can I, so if. Um, in response to Sissy's question of like the nuts and bolts of it, is we have a statistics. We have a sheet, we have sheets that. That, um.
I guess what I'm also saying, this is consistently a daily, if you do the statistics on that, that's a daily seventy two. People.
Yeah.
A day.
It's listed by date. These are blank sheets that we have at the desk, and you mark. A hashtag when a patron comes in, or we have a family of four that comes in, and you just mark four, so it's kind of an in. In real time, I guess, and then the numbers can kind of look different too. If you look at the branch statistics sheets, you have patrons that come in, so that's bodies in the door. Technically, you're only supposed to mark somebody one time. So if you go to coffee and you stop to chat with Darlene. And then you go to lunch at the senior center and you come back to check out a book, and then you go to the grocery store and come back, like technically, that should only be one, one patron visit. Um, and then there's computer, there's physical computer usage, kids coming after school, people coming into print things. There is wifi use, which in Geraldine, one hundred percent. Of people, if you like, if you're using your phone there, you ha- you're on the library wifi. Um, I was in Geraldine the day that power was out after that big windstorm. And Kim had to leave the, leave Rusty's to stand in front of the library because library has battery backup, so. Um, if people are on their phones, Darlene has mentioned that kids come in and use their school computers, they're connecting to the wifi, so that's the wifi. Um, and then there's one-on-one tech help. That's if my mom comes to the library and asks me to check out a Libby book for her, that's one-on-one tech help. And then questions, be it. Do you know when the rummage sale is or where are your newspaper, like any basically questions that people ask? So those are different statistics we look at. We have it divided right now. Open in the morning until one o'clock and then one o'clock until close, um, kind of for ease of. And then that's where those, so that's the, like, the nuts and bolts of it physically. Then these reports are scanned and sent to me and, um, I put them into the spreadsheet.
So with the numbers, because numbers don't lie. If I walked into Big Sandy Library every day for two weeks, every day, there should be seventy two people there.
Well, not at one time. There's not going to be seventy two people here, but.
Same, well, according to statistics, if you divide how many hours that they're open and what she's turning in. You're looking at seventy two people a day. And I don't know.
Sirup, right?
Uh, yes. You're, you're done. Sorry. We'll work on that.
I have.
Judy.
I'm Judy, your son. So I live here in Al, and I'm a homeschool mom, so my schedule is very different. Um, I come in mornings and there's, uh, ladies and gentlemen that come in and. Like you said, they go get their coffee, they come read the newspaper, they kind of come into this little media room. Um, there's even adults that just come in here to use the wifi, um, people I don't even know. And there's constantly kids, like, there's so many homeschool families here now, and they just come in and it's. It's a time when they're not even just checking out books, but sometimes, like, even for my kids, I have them just like, read a book here. Because we, you haven't even read what we checked out, so read this here and then we're gonna go. Or, um, as a parent also, there's a volleyball game and we're waiting to go to the volleyball game. So many parents come here with their kids before, I think like you said, it's accessible, it's very different because.
It's a great location.
Yeah, there's nowhere else to go. I mean, really, and it's. Yeah, it's a great thing because, you know, kids like, they come here to hang out, which is wonderful. It's like. Yeah, um, and I think that's the thing, it's like, kids get out of school and it's just like flooded in here. And.
You don't want to come.
Got trapped and whatnot, and so it's just, it is constant motion. I think it's just the city is set up different.
Right?
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Any more quickly, because it's, we've been two hours at this already, so. Yeah.
We, and we need to decide.
Yes. Can we, can we move ahead?
Yep.
Okay.
We have to decide, all right, well, the next, next meeting is.
Oh, the week before, no, the next meeting is the day before Thanksgiving.
So one, can I just add the one?
Yes.
For, um, so according to the state standards that we need to meet. The board of trustees is required to meet six times per calendar year. With this meeting, we have met ten times. So we have met that standard.
Okay. So, but yes, at the pleasure of the board, which, what do you ladies want to do? What do you feel?
Since I started, we've tried two different ways.
Okay.
Um, we tried to move both meetings up a week. But like instead of the fourth Wednesday of the month, to do it the third Wednesday of the month, what happens with that is. The financial reports that I get are often not to me by then, so then you really just have minutes to talk about. Um, and then one year, we did try to do like the first weekend, December, and that just also wasn't, because you don't have your December stuff yet. I don't know, it was just kind of felt like an awkward thing. Um, I was wondering if, if the board, if. Would be okay with just moving into January, gives us time with the bylaws. I can have the, um, financial reports. We've been really going through the financial reports and then branch reports quite quickly. Um, in the past, so that would be.
January.
Leaving, dropping November and December.
Madam Chair, may I please add?
Yes.
I guess my only addition would be that we could possibly throw in a continuing ad.
Yes.
So that would be something we could look at.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Okay, so all of you need to, all the school children need to look at like Christmas programs, Christmas concerts. You know, stuff like that, and then find a.
I'm okay, just give me the next to me, that sounds like our only urgent. Potentially urgent thing is an executive session regarding personnel issues for weeding, but maybe that would be more useful to do after the week has been completed. To see if it's still an issue, okay?
Can we split it up and have a meeting on the eleventh of December that it take care of November's? Or is there even a possibility to send the, send the financials to us and we report back to you?
Um, I, I think we could do it that way. So it wouldn't be an accepting of the financial records, but at least everyone could look at them. It would be less to look at later. Is that what you're?
Yes, and then.
I could still say, as I get those reports done, as I get them from Cheryl, and then I get them finished, I could send those.
Cause you're.
An email.
Sure, Christmas programs don't start until after the fifteenth of December.
Oh, you never know.
The elementary program is.
You never know. See, we have three, yeah, we have a lot of different towns here.
And Giordo County, Country Christmas, the Christmas show, all those things, um.
Yeah, well, we need forty eight hours to, we've now started meeting, right? Correct. At this point, we could plan no means in November, December, but if something comes up, we have the ability to.
And as far as scheduling a meeting and choosing a meeting date, that can be done over email. That is not business conducted, and then we just have to make sure that there's a forty eight hour.
Okay, so we do move about that or anything, we just.
I think so, if we decide, do we want that next meeting date on here to be January? One to, one to second.
Unless we decide something else, right?
Right.
So, do we need to move that?
Nope.
Okay, good, all righty, we're done?
I love you as chair. The first one. Ten making a year, good job.
I need to adjourn this meeting at two twen- two sixteen, ooh, that's a long one. Thank you all for coming and for your input.
So there will be, I'm gonna mute this again, but leave the recording going in the foundation meeting.
Oh, yes. Yeah.